Michael.
Yes, sir. What would you like to know?
Well, we know your name, but some people might not, so why don't we just let us know what you are, who you are, and what you are.
What you are.
And what you are. How you doing, whatever.
Mike, you want me to answer that?
We don't care.
Yeah, I'll take care of it. Mike Weaver, as far as this is, I serve on the Apache Junction School Board. Member for two and a half years now.
Jeff?
I'm Jeff Sertie on council, own a local retail business as well. Now, I get to be the first to welcome everybody here to the MultiGen. And of course, this is not our MultiGen, it belongs to everybody in here, just like a lot of the sentiment is that the schools belong to all of us too, and a lot of us think that way, so that's the mindset we're all coming from.
Gail Evans, I've been on council now three years, I think it's three years, and been a realtor for 27 years.
Older.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Start over there now.
I'm Danielle Reynolds, I'm third year of the school board, owned Little Prospector for 22 years now, and I am really happy to be here, and I appreciate you guys hosting in Handel Bar, thank you so much, and I'm 42.
Brave girl.
And I'm the youngest one, add those cable on shirt.
And I'm the oldest one, so tell her we go.
Okay, and I'm not telling.
I'm Robin Barker, I'm Vice Mayor of the City Council, this is my fourth term, something like that. I too own a business in the community, and all my kids went through the school, all my grandkids went through the school, and I'm now starting on great grandkids going through the school, so.
Congratulations.
A great deal of investment, thank you. I'm only 28 old.
It works, yes.
Jeff Cranmer, school board president this year, and in the community my whole life.
Yeah.
Happy to be here.
My whole life.
That's what this way I remember it as a baby.
It's a reference point.
And I'm only 28.
That's right, so 28 years.
All these liars over here.
So, happy to be here.
I'm Johnny Insalaco, I've been in Apache Junction since 86, been Arizona since 1970, got elected to the council in 97, and mayor in 2007, and I'm not afraid, I'm 78.
And I'm Wendy Moore, and I am into my 11th year on the school board, and I actually am a fourth generation Arizonan, and started in Phoenix, moved, migrated east, and have chosen to make Apache Junction our home, and raised three kids that went K through 12 through the school system.
I'm Dave Ward. This is my second term on city council, I've been DJ for 22 years, I'm 28.
You're 28.
Me too.
May I retire?
I'm 22.
I'm Deana Kimball, also board member in Apache Junction School District, been in the city for, well, not in the city, I've been in Apache Junction for 15 years, only a board member for 10 months, I'm a newbie. Being said, I'm gonna say I am the youngest, okay, Danielle? And I have one daughter in high school, freshman, my son just graduated last year, and I'm a volleyball mom, so I'm pretty busy.
I'm Chip Wilson, I can definitely say that before we actually moved to the city of Apache Junction, when we came down here in 1990, we went out into the community, into the surrounding communities to look for a place to live, and one of the things that stood out in our mind when we chose Apache Junction to concentrate looking for our home was the community of Apache Junction, and it did include the school. We put two boys through the school, my oldest boy came in here as a sophomore, and his whole idea was that he was going to do his best to graduate, and he took advantage of many things as he could as he was going through, and my youngest decided that he wanted to play football, until he went out for football his freshman year, and it was too much work. The coach was too hard on him, he said. So, really and truthfully, since we've been here, we've had what I feel is a good relationship with the school. I do appreciate you all being here this evening, and I would love to be able to continue this on and have some future meetings, and say about me, oh, I'm just second term, basically coming to an end now.
My name is Krista Rizzi, I'm also a council member, this is my first term, second year on the council. I'm a former employee, about almost 11 years with the school district, absolutely loved working there, loved working with kids. My husband and I also are local business owners, volunteer, like many of you, in the community in a lot of different projects, and I've been in Apache Junction for about 20 years, and we're really glad to be having this meeting, we welcome you here, and we look forward to just working together as two entities that serve our children in the community, so welcome.
Okay, with that, one of the first items on the agenda is the formation of a youth council. How this all started, we all, all the council members, myself, we go to the, what they call the League of Cities and Towns, and it's held different places, this past, well, past August, it was held in Tucson, and every time we go to these conventions, they always have all the cities, not all the cities, more and more of the cities are having youth councils. Some cities, big or small, will have just four or five kids, some will bring a whole class, and it's just neat to see the way these students work there. They get an idea of their community, how to work with their community, they come with ideas, bring them to the city council, and we've been talking about it, how many years, Robin, to do it? And I think it's time that we get together and see if we can form, and it wasn't a student council of the schools, it was just a group of kids, picked themselves however, and they just, then they represent the city, so they're a student council for the city. It doesn't have to be their student council, and it's mostly all the grades in the high school, so that's one of the things that would be nice to be formed, so.
Well, thank you, I'm Liz Langabuck, and just want to thank you for inviting me here. Good evening, Mayor Insalaco, members of the council, President Cranmer, and members of the school board. It's definitely my pleasure to be joining you guys all tonight, and I'm here to just share a little bit more about the teen council concept, as well as just share a few of the great partnerships and the great programs that we have been, you know, have had the ability to do with the school district. Tonight, our Parks and Rec Director Jeff Bell, he's actually at a Parks and Rec Commission meeting tonight, they're talking about our downtown development park that's gonna be, that we're looking at right now, so he was unable to be here, but he definitely would have liked to have been here to share more with you tonight. Unfortunately, you guys are stuck with me instead of Jeff. As the mayor was saying, the teen council is really envisioned a lot by various members of the council, have talked about it over many, many different years, and have all had expressions of wanting to have something like that in our community. And so, this last year, we spent a lot of time researching, visiting other cities, talking with folks about how they do it, what works for them, what doesn't work for them, and then proposed some ideas for the council, and just wanted to share with you a little bit about what we decided as a group, and that the direction we were given from council for the direction of our council, I'm sorry, of our teen council. It's gonna be assigned to the Parks and Recreation Department to plan and coordinate the group. It's gonna be coordinated more like a program, instead of a council that has, you know, open meeting laws and all of that. We'll certainly be teaching a lot of that, and we'll certainly be learning a lot of those aspects, but we kinda wanted to keep that part of it out of that, run it more like a program and have a little bit more control of that. It's gonna consist of approximately 15 members, give or take, depending on kinda how many we get, there will certainly be officers elected out of that group, and then we're looking to have it consist of mostly eighth through 12th graders, so mostly high school age, but certainly having a couple of eighth graders, so that way they can kinda be getting that experience from junior high and moving into the high school grade level, and they would be all youth that either reside in or go to school in Apache Junction. And then the primary objective is to provide youth a voice in our community, whether it's, and educate them on local government, as well as develop their leadership skills. We have already a number of wonderful opportunities for our youth for leadership, whether it's at Boys and Girls Club, the library has a great advisory board, obviously, as the mayor said, the student council at the high school is certainly a wonderful leadership program, Cactus Canyon has theirs, we have a wide wealth of leadership groups in our community, and the idea of this one is really to more collaborate with those groups, and also have a little bit more of a focus throughout the city in general. Some of the things that, the objectives that we want to kind of implement, so they would help us to implement a couple of teen programs, so that they have something right away to get off and doing, they would discuss and give a youth perspective on city projects and issues, and then they'd also be a sounding board for other community agencies on youth issues. So, many of the groups that we talked to from other cities, they didn't have a ton of issues in their community that the youth could really get involved in every single month, so they reached out to other community organizations, and that were looking for youth perspective on wellness, on, you know, drugs, on whatever it is that's out there. There's a lot of other groups in our community that really, I think, could use, you know, a group that they could be a sounding board off of, and like I said, we have a lot of those types of groups in our community. This one, we were really looking to try to collaborate with a lot of those groups, and certainly not compete, but work together on enhancing all of our programs. We've already reached out to schools in the area, so we'll be reaching out to each of the schools that have junior high and high school aged kids. We actually have a meeting with Nikki Smith, you're the school district's student council advisor at the high school, and we'll be meeting with her after the fall break. She actually was really excited to hear about it, and had let us know that she was really interested in working together, and we would certainly be using that as an opportunity to recruit some members, as well as to talk about ways that we could collaborate together. We will also be visiting more of the, some of what we would consider the best of the best in the valley, some of the agencies that sent youth councils to the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, our city manager's office, as well as our council members, many of them got to meet various groups from there, and gave us a lot of great recommendations on, you know, who's doing things the right way, and has kids that are really on fire for their programs. So, we'll be meeting with those groups, and meeting with their actual students, and figuring out how to make sure that that is how successful we are here. We will be actually accepting applications in January, and the idea is that this first part is the end of the school year, we'll focus on eighth through 11th graders, and they will really work hard on some of our, end of the school year, summertime youth programs, so that way, again, they can kinda get off, get started and get rolling on something right away, instead of waiting and it kinda fizzling out, it'll be something they can work on right away, and then be ready for the next school year. And then it will be an ongoing application process. Once we have our core group of kids, when we have openings, we will certainly seek new membership through, you know, various channels, and let folks apply as there's openings available. That's it on the teen council, just some other partnerships that I wanted just to make a note of during my time here, and then certainly am open to any other questions that you might have. AJ Safe and Fit is a program that we had started with the school district many years ago to create safe routes to our schools. It was a grant-funded program that we kinda have gone away from some of the original, once we didn't have that grant any longer, we went away from some of the original projects, but one of the projects that we kept that is really fun is our walking school bus. So, all the schools in our community, we meet at a location that's about, I'd say a quarter of a mile, a half a mile, does that sound right, Mrs. Wallace? At a location once a month, and then the teachers come on, they walk over to that location, the staff, parents and students come to that location, and our staff are there to greet them with information on walking and biking safely, and then we all walk together. Our AJ Police Department's auxiliary comes and they escort us, so that way it's a very safe walk, and we had, so Four Peaks and Desert Vista have participated already this year, they had their first walk of the school year in September. Four Peaks had 73 participants in their walk this past Tuesday morning, so it was a lot of fun. The school really gets involved with competitions between their classrooms, I was at Desert Vista's assembly recently, for, cause my son also goes to our, this school district, and I'm very proud of that. I was at Desert Vista's assembly, and they actually presented the classrooms with their trophy for having the most walkers in the walking school bus. And so, that program's really more about teaching safety, as well as fitness, getting families to walk together. I think it's amazing that our teachers and our staff participate in that, and it's definitely a really fun event. Recently, we've had a lot of game and info booths at some of the different carnivals, at Desert Vista, at the high school's homecoming, as well as all of the open houses. It's a win-win for all of us, because we come and provide some extra games for the kids that are participating in that event, and then we also get to share and market, promote our programs, which is, that's the group that we really want to get in touch with to be able to share about all of our great after-school programs, as well as all of our other things that we have to offer here at the MultiGen Center. Due to our inter-agency agreement, we have been able to do a lot of great things already this year, for the community and for students in particular, as well as our regular community members. We kept our pool and park operating throughout the summer months. The city was able to utilize Cactus Canyon's gymnasium for one of our summer open gym sites, as well as a youth basketball site. Super Junior Shadows Aquatic Center is open and operating for the high school swim team to practice and hold meets, they just had a couple of meets here these last couple of weeks, very successful. The high school hosted two cross-country meets out at Prosperity Park's multi-use trail system, and we've worked closely with Tina and all of her team there for many years to develop that trail, and make sure that it's a great, safe course for the cross-country meet. Field space at Super Junior Shadows Park for Cactus Canyon's PE classes and sports. We are able to share our news, I know Dana Homan isn't here today, the PIO for the school district, but we share information back and forth over and over again. We so appreciate being able to share our programs through the school district, and vice versa. This year, one of the new things though is on our marquee, we're really making an effort to get the word out about the community-related events that the school has to offer. Our school district has some wonderful programs, drama performances, our band performances, the homecoming festivities, that we definitely want our whole community to take part in, and we're able to start putting that on our marquee this year because of our inter-agency agreement. And then lastly, most recently, we partnered with the wonderful Dave Balog from, I think he's high school and Cactus Canyon, or just high school primarily, okay. Leads the Apache Junction Band Program, and we've always, we've worked with him for a lot of years, but this year in particular, we're gonna be partnering with him, trading some extra performances by the AJHS Jazz Lab in exchange for use of the mobile stage for their big performance that's coming up in November. They're gonna be doing their annual celebration of music out on the football field, and we work together to be able to, again, through our inter-agency agreement, be able to work together to have that trade of services. So, I think that's just, again, a little snapshot of some of the wonderful things that I think that we are doing together, and I definitely am very appreciative, I'm sorry, I didn't really introduce myself very well at the beginning. Liz Langabuck, and I know I said my name, but I worked for the city for over 20 years, and very proud to work for the city, and very proud to have my kids going to school in this school district, as well as having graduated from here. So, I think this is a great meeting, and I look forward to us having many more in the future. So, are there any questions for me?
Jeff?
Oh, back to the student council, do you see that as being, how much expense to the school, would the individual kids have expense, what part would the city pick up? I mean, they wear some clothes, what, how would that work?
So, the teen council, you mean, that we're talking about that we're gonna be doing? Yeah, this is actually a city program, we're just gonna be collaborating with some of those other agencies, so it's not a student council, it's gonna be the City of AJ's Youth Council, and...
So, it will cost the school nothing?
Right, and it's really not gonna, yeah, we'll have our staff time, and then working with the school district, and so some of their staff will be helping to collaborate with some of those programs, and yeah, we're just sharing with, this'll be kinda a new opportunity that we'll be able to be sharing in our community.
Liz?
Yes.
See, some of those, some of the cities brought the whole staff, and a lot of them just brought their officers.
Yes.
And they came right there, they had their rooms, they had a chaperone there, so that was all on city expense, so. It's a neat experience for the kids, to go to these different conferences and see how all the cities and towns work, it's a great experience for these students.
Yeah, and so, in kind of answer of that, we did budget this year for a few things for this, to get it going and started, as per the direction by the council that we wanted to have this, so, you know, this high school and some of those groups, they would be paying for their student councils to go to their annual conferences, this is gonna be our opportunity to send kids to our annual conference, Arizona League of Cities and Towns, so it's a neat opportunity for them.
Yeah, one of the things that I saw when I got to talk to several of the school councils, excuse me, the councils from the different schools and different cities, and it was how much they were motivated, and how excited they were in being involved. I talked to one individual, and he was saying that, you know, he says, first off, I didn't realize what it took for a government to be running in a city, and he says, and it was a great education to me, and he says, and how we determined that was, he says, we were tasked with to run the, I'll say, design and maintain and plan an event at their pool, at the city pool, and he says, it really was a challenge, and it was understanding of how things work and what you need to do. And it was real exciting to talk to these kids, and how they were involved in the community, and how they now, like the one kid said, he says, I'm a senior now, and he says, but before, he says, I couldn't wait to move out of here and get the heck out of this small town, and he says, and now I see how great it is. So, it does show, you know, that the kids have more appreciation of our, of the community, and that's one of the things we would like to definitely get going with our community as well, cause I'm proud to be a member of the city of Apache Junction. Anyone else?
I just think that the kids are really excited about being part of the community. One, they've probably been here all of their lives, but just the opportunity, the experience they can have, for it to lead into the future, they will put these on their resumes for the rest of their lives, they can put these on scholarship applications and benefit from this experience, which is, I mean, kudos to you guys for even starting it up, because I know there's many, many leaders in our school district that are just wanting to use their time somewhere else, you know, even the ones that are on student council or not even on student council, are looking for those opportunities, and by doing this, it gives them that.
You know, one of the things that got the students really happy about, like, we all have our city flags, and they have what they call the parade of flags, the first opening day. Well, our flag bearer is council member Wilson, but a lot of the cities that have the councils, the students were the flag bearers, they walked that whole thing through, how many people are there, and you don't think, the smiles, the smiles on their faces when they were carrying their city flag, so I mean, it's a big thing for these students to do this, and Chip's getting too old to carry that flag.
I'm perfectly willing to hand that for you.
Anyone else?
I just wanna say thank you, Liz, for all your hard work, it's great working with her, and we're friends, and she does so much, and I appreciate all you do.
Thanks.
Yeah, so I would chime in and say thank you as well, and I applaud these kind of efforts.
Absolutely.
I've had the privilege for the last three years now to form a club at the school, and it's a leadership club, it's about leadership and experience, and trying to develop the ability to build projects. It's not easy work, but the rewarding part is what I think Liz is talking about, is that we have no shortage of kids who are looking for leadership opportunities, same thing you said, and we have, and we have an abundance of great kids who want to serve their community and work for others, and so, that's my reward, that's what I get out of it, is to be able to see them develop projects, work on projects, and our group is actually going to, called the Leo Club at the high school, and we are going to be the host club at a statewide Lions Conference, that's what it's founded through, to form a statewide district of youth through Leo Clubs throughout the state, we're the host for that, and I suspect that we'll be key players in the organization of that, so it's, you know, I can't be prouder of these kids and the work that they put in and the effort that they put forth, so I applaud you, anything we can do in this kind of direction is an absolute positive for everybody.
You need to give us the kids.
And these are our future.
Share the kids. Share, thank you, Liz.
They're my kids, but we'll share the kids.
Okay, discussion on state law, let me, where's that tall drink of water? Joel?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
You know, I wanna stand, but I'm just...
Don't have to.
Stand in the front here.
You can't leave them out, so, I'm Joel Stern, I'm the city attorney, I've been here 18 years, so. First of all, it's now 6:39, at 7:39, we'll take a break.
No, you won't. No, you won't.
Okay, so you want to do short, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I gave you a handout, and what it is, it's a, the first page is a summary from the legislators, that talk about the newest change to the laws relating to influencing elections, from the standpoint of the city and from the school district. First of all, 9-500.14, that's the one that deals with cities, has been amended since 1996, three times, so we have some attention with the legislators, I don't know why, but you beat us in district pieces. 15-51 has been amended six times since 1987. Now, sometimes the changes are the same, and they're in different subsections, and they're just numbered differently, but I can do this fairly quickly, if you go to the first statute, which is 9-500.14, the subsections are the same for the school district, pretty much, and I'll call out the ones that are not the same, but we can go through the 9-500.14 ones, and you could assume they're for the school district also. So, for the first one, that's the basic rule, the city and the district cannot use their resources for the purpose of influencing outcomes of elections. And over the years, they've expanded what resources means, and now it's a huge, it's just resources, and now they wanna cover everything, cause they wanna catch you in everything, that is the intent of the legislature. However, you can do informational pamphlets on bond elections, the city can, and so can the school district on school district elections. Has to be presented in a neutral manner, so you can't take a viewpoint on it, you have to say, here's what the facts are, and that's it, you can't say, hey, oh, yes, you cannot do that. Tucson got in trouble on a bond election, where they had, the mailer went out that had a checkmark, oh, look who's here, the officers, the boys are here, let's have a handful of officers.
Oh.
Some food left, so, thank you for coming. Anyway, they had a checkmark, X to the box, which implied to the electorate, oh, yes, and so that was struck down, and they, and Tucson got in trouble with that, that's just one example of one election case. Section B, when does it start, when does this prohibition start? It starts after the election's called, through the time that the election occurs. So, during that time, well, also during that time, you can do city or district communications at a routine, and they define that later in the statute, and we can go through that if you'd like. Later C, can you, can you government-sponsored forums or debates if government remains impartial and events are purely informational, with all viewpoints having equal opportunity? So, for the city, it means a candid debate, you could have different candidates debate, and it can be on city property, you can use city cameras to put it on the, on our cable channel, that's allowed as long as it is neutral, so there's a fine line there, and you gotta be careful with that. So there's a fine line there and you gotta be careful with that. And I think the district can probably do the same thing during district, district elections if you want to do. Uh, subsection D, employees of city cannot, and, and district, use their authority or their positions to influence the vote or poll activities of subordinate employees. E, uh, the AG or the Penal County Attorney can initiate a dejunctive relief suit. They're the ones who enforce this statute for the district as well as the city. Here's the worst, this is the nastiest provision. This is F. Oh, F, that's good for the school district and for us. The penalty for each violation is five thousand dollars, uh, or up to that amount. Any judge can award that. The misuse amount. These are personal liabilities against the individual that does it. This would not go against the city itself. It cannot come out of city general fund or district general fund. It goes into the pocket of the individual that did it. Also, insurance won't cover this, so you can't get out that way either. So they really covered this. I'll tell you, the legislative process, they really thought this one up. I wish they could make up better on some other laws, but they really had thought of this one. I don't know why we get the attention. G, they put this one in, which I'm surprised. Actually, there are still First Amendment rights and that includes that. And then you get to the definitions of government sponsored, influencing out of the elections, tissue funds, routine city or town communications. If you want, I can get questions on those. But before I do that, the school district had a few other subsections, um, that really don't apply to the city. But I think the main reason you wanted me here was to ask, what can you do as a councilperson or a district representative for the override? I think that's, it's on the agenda, so I can talk about that. Well, the council member can write a letter to the paper and can put their name saying, hey, public, we need to support this. Council member can do that. The district member can do it also. And you can put your title. I don't think that's a problem at all. That's, are you influencing elections?
As long as you don't use cities or school stationery.
That was last thing.
No, it would be materials. It would be resources from the district or the city. You can't use that stationery.
Correct. And I think if someone typed that up for you, that's another part of the statute that I, I had not seen before. If you conspired with someone, if I conspired with council member Evans and we're going to go and do something with city funds that was going to help out the school district on their election, I'm also in trouble as an employee. But I still have to pay it out of my own pocket. So it's kind of like a civil conspiracy offense. That's what it is. It's not crime, but it's, it's a civil case. So, and that's up to five thousand dollars plus the misuse of us.
So Joel, this refers to as, um, as government entities, but not as individuals. As individuals, we have the right to go out to the community and, and speak our opinion, just not doing it on government, you know, issue like council member Barker said, stationary or using the funds from a government agency. But as individuals, we would be able to support.
Yes, absolutely. You could even have your council member, I'm sorry?
I said you can go knock on doors and introduce yourself and say, we should really vote X, Y, and Z for any issue that we want to, as long as we're not using government resources to do that.
That's correct.
The city or the school district.
And if you have a badge and has your name on it with your council member or vice mayor or mayor or district, uh, board member identity, you can have that too, even, even though you're in public. You can do that. That's not a problem.
Joel, this is all verbatim for the home rule as well.
It is, yes. It is. Any election. It talks about any election, candidate election, recall election, any ballot measure, initiative, referendum, uh, override. And so it also, this, I didn't put the other sections in here, but it also deals with community colleges, universities, and also special districts.
Joel, well, doesn't that go back to, is, doesn't matter if you're a board member or a council member or mayor, you are still, you still are a citizen of the city. You still have your rights.
That's right. And that's what that one section that talks about, you have your First Amendment rights. And you still do under that section. Now, attorney generals, county attorneys, look at these things. It depends who's complaining, I think. It shouldn't depend on complaints, but it probably does. And I think the attorney general's office is going to have much more scrutiny than the county attorney's office. They're more likely to pursue a case, I believe. You don't lump them on your back at all, ever, ever.
So Joel, can I ask you a question? So if I wrote a letter to the editor and I just put my opinion in there, I can sign it as a school board member or would it only have to be factual?
You could sign it as a school board member, absolutely.
So even if it's just like...
Your opinion is fine.
Your opinion is, as, as long as you don't say, the city, the, the school board says this, it's, it's your opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, now you can't have a school board meeting. And you know what? I should have given you, uh, I should have said something before I started speaking. I talked to your attorney. I said, why aren't you going? You should go to this thing. He said, I wasn't invited. So I think his feelings were hurt a little bit, but I'm just kidding. Come on. But I gave him a copy. Okay. I did give him a copy of everything for full disposal. So he knows exactly what I'm talking about tonight. And I think he would agree that if you had a school board meeting and you made a motion to send a letter to the press saying, we as this, the school board want everybody to vote yes, that's an obvious violation and that you cannot do that.
Right.
But you as an individual, and you can put your name down, send it to the paper. They can print it. Uh, Dean Olson, um, I'm sorry, Dean Campbell. I know Dean Olson too. School board member, that is not a problem. Council members do it all the time and it's not, it's not illegal.
Okay, seems pretty clear though. The difference between the individual and the agency is pretty cut and dry and it seems pretty clear.
It is.
One place I think some, I work with teachers, some, sometimes the people get caught up is they start to think of, I mean, I don't have a district email. But teachers sometimes have a district email. They all have it. They think that's their email. That's a government, that's, that's use of government tools or...
Absolutely.
So you sent that email on, on that, you violated the law.
And it's public record. Someone does a public record request, they can get it. Um, if it's private information, um, yes, you can redact that, but you can still discipline them from the employment net.
But you can use your personal email.
Your personal email?
Yeah. Well, you have, I mean, you can use your, as long as you're not using a, in your case, a, uh, the school district computer to send yourself an email or send an email out, that would be in violation. But if you're using your personal aspects on it, that's, there's no problem there.
Any questions for Joel?
Thank you very much.
Gee, you did that pretty good. Presentation and update of discussion of downtown and state land.
Brian Powell, city manager, three months, somewhere near forty-two years of age.
Somewhere near.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Let's leave, let's leave that back one on there, yeah. Let's do that. No. Can you see this okay? I'm afraid post dinner will kick in and everybody start to fall asleep. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. We, I think the first order of business should be congratulations to the school for a wonderful spirit week last week, homecoming week, and a win over Seton Catholic. I think that was great. I think it's two years in a row for us. And I'm really glad that Larry LaPriece reached out to me a couple of weeks ago and offered an opportunity for our library department and our Parks and Recreation Department to participate throughout the weekend. I call it, um, Wonderful Wonderland. I'm not sure what the theme was exactly, but it was Alice in Wonderland. We had Mad Hatter Day. We had Queen Day. We had White, White Day and, and, uh... It was good. It was great. Our staff had a great week and had a lot of fun with it. Tonight's presentation, uh, for, uh, some of you may be old information, but I, I think it's really important that as we consider the impact and importance of these two bodies coming together, considering, uh, from a city staff perspective in the world that, that I'm in, in economic development, growing our economic base, community, uh, development, there are often two questions that are asked of us. How safe is your community? And how is, how is your, how are your school? How's your school doing? So tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about where we've been in the kind of two focus areas for us, the downtown and the, um, the state land area and help everyone at least have an understanding of where we are at up to this point. It has such a great impact of where we're headed. So, uh, nineteen ninety-eight, the city council joined with the school board, the community college district, and Penal County to implement at the time what was a legal organization, a grouping of a tax increment finance zone. And as I understand it, I wasn't here at the time, but the different bodies got together and formed this geographic area and what we call the focal point area that said for a period of time, thirty years in fact, that this area, any new increment of property tax would be reinvested into this geographic area for our city. And this is, was one of the very first projects. It's a welcome sign. You go north on Phelps Off of Broadway. Some of the initial projects included some landscape, walkable area, some, um, some banners to help folks know that they arrived. And then once those kind of time came along, we started seeing some investment. Like the Los Gringos local area, Pizza Hut, the Frye Center, and those then brought a new increment of property tax. So the base was frozen, but that new increment brought in us an opportunity to put some dollars that were not from the general fund, uh, towards this area town. This is kind of on the northwest part of that, that, that zone. Um, we had our first ever on-street parking. It's been an emphasis of our community, tried to, in our city, to bring in events and to start, we're having Earth Har, Earth Park events and Farmer's Market's starting to emerge now. Some real, um, some real neat things that are happening because of some of the investments that are happening in this area. Now, this is something that happened within the last year. It's kind of hard to see. On the left is what we call the two fourplexes that were on the North Apache Trail. The city council worked with the property owner to swap land about a year ago. And in last March, uh, we were able to acquire about three point five acres of land, kind of on the northwest part of, of that area. It's vacant now. That's the, the after photo. Uh, this is what Liz talked about earlier with regard to some planning that's going on with our Parks and Recreation Commission. In this area, the idea is to, um, continue to do the investment. The dilemma though, that we have at the city now is that about three and a half years ago, in coordination with the county, the county decided to stop paying the TIF, uh, payment. Because of that, um, we needed to find out, and they're all, the reason why they did is because after we had implemented the, the TIF in nineteen ninety-eight, a few years after that, the state government changed the law on TIF. Now, I had an opportunity working in San Antonio for a few years. San Antonio has the Riverwalk. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. But in San Antonio, there's forty-nine TIF districts alone, just in one city to help re-energize that investment in the downtown. So, um, for whatever reason, the state of Arizona is the only state that does not have TIF, uh, TIF legal to be able to do. It's a real neat redevelopment tool. So when the legislation came down, it wasn't, it wasn't legal anymore. The county decided that that wasn't going to be possible to pay. And so we've actually been, uh, working with the county in what we call the friendly litigation to get a judgment. I will never use that word again. It wasn't friendly. But that's how it started out. For the mayor and council, they're familiar with that. And in the end, a judge decided that in fact, the county shouldn't be paying those payments. So last, I don't know when it was, Chad, a few months ago, you and I talked and said, now those TIF payments are going to be going back to the school, to the county and, and to the, uh, community college district. So what we've been able to do is collect some development fee revenue. It's about four hundred and fifty thousand in that fund right now. And we were going to be able to start on our very first effort of phase one for the downtown park. Emphasis on not a normal playground, Ramada type thing, but more where events could come. We're changing our ordinance for food truck ordinance to be friendlier for food trucks to come in and have more events. Just last night, uh, our city council reviewed another, uh, review of an ordinance that will allow for special events to become even easier to happen in the city. And we have two, uh, downtown thoughts on it right now, two, um, considerations for the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I think they are going to be recommending one of them or a hybrid to the city council pretty soon. I think this would be a great thing for our student, uh, student council slash youth council to be able to work on. So the thought investing in downtown and infrastructure is that it brings private investment. Over the last ten years, we've seen these types of investments that bring in property taxes, that bring in jobs, that bring in, uh, more services for our community. So before I go to the state land, any questions on downtown at all?
Yeah, there was some discussion on social media regarding, since we're here with the school, that how can the city be affording to build this million dollar, multi-million dollar projects and not do more to help the school? So can you explain, is there money for this park? How will that money come? And how long will it take to actually build this park?
I'm, I'm very, uh, councilor, sir, very glad you asked that question. I was just talking with a member of the media not too long ago about a Penal County Town Hall that's coming up regarding taxes and where do they go. We are viewed by the public, the more and more I'm in this, as the government. Together, we are viewed, whether we like it or not, as one body. And what happens is, is we are not. We're two different groups and, and set up differently in state law. But they, it's very easy to confuse, how can the city be doing a, a road right now when, when, you know, the belief on, on that person's is like, there are schools and we can't afford in the school. And so the best answer I always give is that we are two separate entities, two different boards. And in fact, even within the city, we have many, many different funds that, that are known as fund accounting. And in fact, state law for development fees for the revenue that's going to build the park is not general fund. It, we have certain obligations of where that money could be used for elsewhere, even within our own organization.
We can't rob Peter and pay Paul.
It just is elite, yeah, just, those, those are certain revenues that come in. Those revenues for the park came in from homeowners that invested in our community. And when we, when they came in, they, uh, paid an impact fee, five thousand bucks. So every new home that comes in, a certain portion goes to parks, a certain portion goes to libraries, a certain portion goes to...
But there's not instantly going to be a park there.
It's not either.
The road yet grounds is still a work in progress.
It is a work in progress. Our first phase, if I'm, we're going to be going out to, uh, try to get some sponsorships. We're working really hard on that. But the first phase, if we can get the area so that we can bring in our mobile stage, that we have grass, hardscape, some public safety lighting, we, we, we may, that would be great for us to have that at first. May not have even restrooms at first right now. So what you saw up there is just the beginning of a master plan.
Where, I didn't quite see it, but where would the parking be for those bigger events?
Yeah, so our parking would be just like, and Liz may be helping or Matt on this, but there's, the idea is just like any of our...
It's okay on the back side.
There's parking around the sides and the front, but the idea is to actually kind of shut down the street and have, we would work with our local businesses and just like our holiday, like parade day, be able to utilize those. We work with the local landowners. We'll work with the folks who own, um, and I don't know if Liz, you've got something on that or not, but...
Well, I was just going to say that just like you go to any downtown event in Chandler or Gilbert or anywhere, there's a parking right by where maybe the food truck event is or something. People go and park at other places. And then hopefully they go to dinner at those places or they stop and they shop. And then they go down to your park and participate in your event. So the idea is that we're creating some spaces so that people will come down to our downtown, take care of either eating or shopping or whatever else and come to the event. So the, the parking won't necessarily be all right at the park, though there will certainly be some for general average everyday users.
And so hopefully with this park, we'll be able to bring events and events bring people and people bring business. That's the, the full circle. If you, if you look at any, um, city that is holding events, they have like a, a central park per se that they're holding events and drawing people. And many of those parks have businesses that build around that park. So it's, again, it's, it's a full circle. It's a park. It draws, you know, you have events, it draws people and, and people eventually draw business.
And they have babies and the babies have to go to school.
Exactly.
Not at the parks, Jim.
Okay, so state land, if you can see on this, it's an elephant in the room. It is absolutely, I can't emphasize enough for our community, big picture, how we are tied as a community to the state land department. It just, it's absolutely critical. So this map, and at some point, I don't know if we want to turn off, uh, the other light, but it's, it's a map of land ownership and it's a map of the East Valley of judicial, uh, of cities. So you see Gilbert, and this is from nineteen ninety-two. And the dots, in essence, represent development. At the time, you'll see Gilbert growing and, and, and very few dots as far as new development coming out. So I want to show over time, since nineteen ninety-two to ninety-eight, what I call the balloon of investment started coming out towards what would have been, or at the time would be the two oh two. And, and you'll see... And you'll see the difference in ninety-eight to two thousand and four. And the light, what I need to also mention is the light blue area inside the city and around the city is huge, it's two hundred and seventy-five square miles, it's owned by the Arizona State Land Department. What it is not is farmland, what it is not is water rights, it has a lot of impact on our growth. And of course, we have a border on the west, which is Mesa, and then to the east is Mountain View Road, and then to the north is McKellips. And then we run into the Superstition Mountain, the Goldfield, so developable land up there is much more difficult, the flatland, where developers want to go is out near where the state land is. So we did grow, you'll see in our Apache Junction area, ninety-eight to two thousand and four, that's when I moved in, that year that I moved in, and two thousand and one, the city had over a thousand permits that year, everybody. I mean, I don't know how to let everybody know that we were growing just like everybody else, city of Tucson last year only had four hundred housing permits. So we were doing our part, but then all of a sudden, you see down south, down here, we stopped between two thousand and four and two thousand and twelve, and that's in the sand tan area. And there are now ninety thousand people that live in this area, and it skipped over us like a wave that goes over a splash. And the best way I'd describe it is it has everything to do with land ownership, because the city manager at the time did have discussions with George Johnson, who decided to develop Johnson Ranch. He came to the city and was working on developing that area baseline in Ironwood, and after a few months with working with the state land department and finding out issues related to that, that before you can even own the land, you got to apply for it, then there's a year-long process, and then there's an auction, and the chance that you may not own the land. So he said, I'm sorry, I don't have the time for this, the market is pushing me hard. He went and talked down south and built Johnson Ranch, and then it's just kind of multiplied over time. Here's the same view of the growth from two thousand to two thousand and three in Apache Junction, the actual city limits in our district area as well, you'll see the growth, and then it just kind of stops where you think it might keep growing, just ends. So this is what we know, Matt, if you can get the, or Al, the light now, this is what we know is what was called back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, is Lost Dutchman Heights or Portalis, the state land was able to sell it to a developer in Las Vegas. He planned for about a year and a half, and then about the time that they were going to move forward on pulling permits, the economy tanked, the land value went in half, and he had about five years to make a payment on the land with this contract with the state land department, never made the payment. That got us to about two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. At that point, they went back to the state land department and said, we can't do anything. The state land said, thank you very much, it's theirs, and ever since then, it's just kind of held. And I've spent the last three or four months, I've had a chance to get to know the new state land commissioner, Lisa Atkins, trying to develop a relationship with her. The prior state land commissioner, Vanessa Hickman, knew our situation very well. When the new governor came, they ended up getting a new state land commissioner because she wasn't sure that she was going to stay on, and it took them nine months to bring on a new state land commissioner, I mean, that's just how it is. And so our new Development Services Director Larry and I are working very hard to help the state land know that there is a market here, that there's twelve square miles. You know very well, the dialogue that's going on in the greater Arizona discussion of education with our governor and our state treasurer about state land, and how that could be a potential help for revenue. They sold some land, and I think every one of our city council members are aware, but if you, I would petition, encourage you, if you have any discussion with folks who deal with the state land department, tell them our story, tell them this is an opportunity for them to grow. And why does it matter? It matters because as those services come, our tax base grows, it'll be able to bring families in here and encourage development in our city, yes.
You know, the problem is, since two thousand and seven I was mayor, we went through four land commissioners. Every time you think you're right at the doorstep, they change and you're back to square one, you're beyond square one. And we sit, you know...
Yeah, so we sit, it's a conundrum in terms of big development. We have a few housing developments here, twenty homes there, condo project here, you see some of them pop up, but they're not big, huge Power Ranch, or Verado, or those are the types of things that we had thought were coming back in the early two thousands and the late nineties. So I just want to be very upfront, let everyone know where we're at on this. What can we do? Our city council, about a year ago, went and said, we need to keep investing in ourselves. They implemented a very small increase in their sales tax of point two percent to go from two point two to two point four. And we've started projects that you've seen on Meridian, that you've seen on Apache Trail, that's now on Delaware, as well as Ironwood, and then last night, we did another contract for some Slurry Seal. And so that investment's very critical for the outside developer to see that there is not an erosion of your investment. If they don't see that the community continues to invest in itself, that will really get the private development jittery. And then we also have this year, a nine million dollar water infrastructure project going in off Ironwood and the Guadalupe where the overpass is. We have utilized the city of Mesa for far too long as our treatment plant, they treat the water and ship it over to the city of Apache Junction. And just this last year, through what's called a WIFA loan, it's a Water Infrastructure Authority Loan, we've started the construction, in essence, sticking a straw in the Cap Canal down there, and what that is going to allow for our city, and what I'm telling developers, is that we now have the ability for fifty, five hundred acre feet of water each year for a hundred years. It equates to, in summary, about thirty thousand new residents. So we have capacity in our water, so when you hear, oh, there's no water out here, or there's no water, we have actually plenty. So our sewer, we're doing all we can with our water, sewer, and roads to be prepared in that area for the development. So...
Is this what you do all day as play with pictures?
This, you know, we have a, it's actually, this is from Frank Blanc, our water director, he actually has some of the neatest water photos that he comes up with.
Any questions for Brian? Or suggestions, or help?
Yes.
I have a small.
Yep.
Jeff had said something earlier regarding the perception that we get from the community regarding the parks, why you were making parks and closing schools, and now there's these nice new roads. And I even remember we're going through the school closure and having those community meetings, people would come up and say, add a dollar to the driver's license. And it's not related, and it's not anything we can do. So I don't know if it's something that we, as a group together, can come up with more education, and maybe we can use the youth council for that, just to let them know that they are separate, and, you know, home rule is different, I mean, people refer to the override as home rule and vice versa, and it's frustrating for me because it's just more, they need more knowledge, and it's a matter of just getting it out there, and maybe more of these, you know, televised things.
More of these, and I'm so glad the media's here, they can help, I mean, they have that trumpet. We, it's amazing to me when people get their property tax, just, you know, when Central Arizona College proposed a change, a significant change in the rate, well, the paper said, what is it in the, it's not, it's the Pinal County Community College District.
Right.
Well, we just confused everybody because it's really CAC. So I think sometimes we're our own worst enemy, because it's not, we need to help really simplify it for the citizens and our residents to understand how that's all set up. So we, you know, everybody thinks we have a property tax, the city of Apache Junction doesn't, but we have a prior district that predates the city, that actually is a normal municipal service, that is the property tax. So it's a constant education.
And your laws being different, where you could, the seven of you can vote on a two percent, a point two percent for your roads, and they're saying, well, why don't five of you just get together and vote on something and build another school, and it's not, because it is so separate.
Funding.
Right. And that I think is the most frustrating, is just, you know, I see it on Facebook and then the papers, and people make those comments, it's just something I don't, until we can get the public knowledge, it seems like we would be just doing the same thing over and over.
Well, we do have the press here, that's with help an awful lot, as much as they can help us in the newspapers, show that it's a school district and it's a city, we're working together, but we're two different entities.
They were funded totally separately.
Yeah, I love the park idea, but it's not saying I'm choosing a park over a school, it's just that's the way it is.
And we're not saying the same thing, we're not saying that we're going to do the park and the heck with the school.
Exactly, but that's just, we understand that, it's just the perception that needs to change.
What did I tell you the other day, I got a call that people wanted to know why, why we closed school.
Right.
I'd like to know the same thing.
No, I mean, well, no, I mean, there's nothing, I'm just saying, people out there don't even know, they still don't know. They think the city, well, back to New York State, the school systems are under the city.
Right.
In most places they are.
In most places they are. And a lot of these people that move out here know that, and they don't know the separation here.
It is difficult, I sat on the fireboard for four years prior to being here, and one of the things that we did annually when we did our budget was we sat around and decided what we were going to set the tax rate at. And, you know, we took into account what we, you know, what our expenditures were, you know, we went through a whole process around that, and then we set the tax rate. And I think most people are under the conception that we have some control over setting the tax rates for schools. And I like to refer to school finance in Arizona makes the school board a victim. And we're, you know, in sometimes a good sense and sometimes a bad sense, but we're basically a victim of a math formula that's created in Phoenix, and then we just have to carry out the, you know, whatever the result of that is. The only exception to that is the ability to ask our local taxpayers to support our schools, and in many cases today, it's essential support, not extra support, for the things that we need to do to adequately give all of our kids the opportunity they deserve. And so it is a difficult question, it's very complicated, most, I've tried, most people you start to try to talk about it, and they just glaze over and go, I gotta go, you know, so it's a problem.
I think one of the things that would help is just the fact that we're starting this, building a rapport together, I think that's really important in how the community views us as two separate entities. I think the community really needs to see us as, even though we're two separate entities, two separate entities that work together for the betterment of the kids and for the betterment of the community. And I just think that's really important, I think we need to do this consistently, I think we need to support one another, work together, just, you know, all egos or whatever aside, and just really work together and dig in and support one another, because we're serving the same people. The bottom line is, they're our kids, all of our kids, whether we have kids in the district, grandkids or not, they're, these are our kids. And so I just think it's really important that we work together as a group and stay working together, and I think that makes an impact in how the community views us, and we can educate the community together on this school district, on the city, and how the different little buckets of money work and don't work. And so to me, that's a huge thing, is being able to work together.
You know, what was nice is when the fire district changed their name because the word Apache Junction came off your property tax bill.
Oh.
Because people would see Apache Junction Fire District, they did Apache Junction, think it was our property tax.
Very true.
So thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
We'll change the school district's name.
You're just confusing it even more now, I guess.
I've been involved a little bit with this, the Save Our Schools group, and going out and trying to build up the support. And I ran into an individual, I shouldn't say ran into, I met an individual that explained to me that, number one, that he would not vote for the override at all, and there was no way in heck that anyone would ever convince him of doing it. So I asked him why, and he says, well, this is a legislative issue, this is not a local issue. Our state legislators have caused the problem, they need to address the problem, they need to spend the funds for the education, because that's the way the funding for the school is established. And he says, it needs to be done. He says, this override is strictly a temporary fix, in five years, you're going to have to come back and ask me again for it. He says, it needs to be done at the state level, not at the local level. I had to fully agree with him. But the unfortunate thing is, as we all know, the state legislation has not been very educational friendly. They haven't been even very city friendly as well, trying to implement laws on us. So, you know, there is some people out there that fully understand it, they just don't comprehend what we're trying to do in this aspect on it. And so there is some people out there that understand. I'll admit, and of course, he said, when I walked away from him, he says, again, he says, there's no way in heck you'll convince me to vote for it. And even though I explained to him that this was a Band-Aid effect, but it would work with him, working with the neighbors and the entire community to start a letter-writing campaign to all the state legislators, I said, would definitely help out. And he says, I'll do that, he says, but I'm still not going to vote for it. So in a sense, there is some people that do understand it, but I have to agree, majority of the people don't understand it. It's been very educational for me to go out there and talk to some of these people. Some people, they're all for it, no problems at all, and others, no way. And it's, in trying to talk to them through on it, it's quite difficult.
You know, and I respect the answer, no, for those reasons, they have good reasons. You know, there's some people that are just saying no for reasons that are, you know, because you're making a park, that's just, those reasons were, is frustrating. But, you know, understandable, I can understand those reasons, you know, have an educated reason.
Well, and I think one of the things that I found interesting is the money that will build that park that comes from new development fees. I mean, the state tells us how much has to go for parks and recreation, how much has to go for police, and we, and then gives us a timeframe that we have to spend the money in. So we can't even, you know, hold on to it and to do a park all at once.
It's got to be done little by little.
We have, we have to do it as we're forced to spend it.
Well, any more questions, any more comments, any more, anything?
You know, I just wanted to say one last thing. I've had the opportunity to attend the youth groups each year that we've gone to the League of Cities Conference, and it's really interesting to listen to what the youth have to say and how they feel about these overrides and different issues in their community. And they are very clear and very articulate that when their overrides aren't passed, they really feel like the community as a whole don't care about them, and that's huge. It makes a difference whether they come back to their community after they graduate and invest themselves in the community, or move on and, you know, go somewhere else. They're listening, they're paying attention, our kids are smart.
Our kids are smarter than what we, not we, people give them credit for.
You betcha.
You know, we thank you very much for this, I think it was...
Recent graduates that are there.
Oh, yeah.
This was well worthwhile, I hope we can do it again. We just got to remember, we live in one community, we should be one. And like you said, Mike, it's your kids, they're everybody's kids. So thank you once again for coming. And you too, Dave, I'm glad you showed up.